Thank you for joining us here tonight. Will you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, Mayor Wagner is not here tonight. He is excused and everyone else is in attendance except Councilmember Carnegie. We may see here. Okay, first on the agenda will be the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items?
I'd like to make a motion to read up consent calendar items A through G.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Lemley and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. We have a special presentation tonight is...
Luigi.
Luigi, we'd like to ask you to come up.
He's been with the city for six years now and he's retiring. And so tonight, we just want to tell him thank you. Thank you for everything he's done, Luigi. We really appreciate everything that you've done for the city. I know the offender work program would not be what it is today if not for everything you've done with that.
Thank you.
And we just want to tell you thank you and congratulations on your retirement and we hope we'll see you. And I'd like to read this plaque that we're presenting to him today. Presented to Luigi Galino for distinguished service to the people of Cedar Woolley as the offender work program supervisor from March 10th, 2010 to August 2nd, 2016. The city is truly fortunate to have benefited from your service. Cedar Woolley is a more beautiful city and better place to live because of your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Do you think you want to say anything?
Just real quick, Luigi. I just want to say thank you also, Luigi. You've done an awesome job and you've pioneered a really great program for the city. For those of you guys that don't know a lot about it, I think they do, about the equivalent of two full-time employees worth of work at no cost to the city. So I don't know how we ever made it without the program actually, but he's a huge part of why it's been such a good success and I'm going to miss you. Thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement and yeah, I'll definitely miss seeing you running around in that big red truck.
Please come visit us. Don't forget to come visit us.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a special presentation by Department of Emergency Management. Krista, would you like to come up?
Hi. So I'm Krista Salinas. I work for Skagit County Emergency Management and we have the CERT program, Community Emergency Response Training, and it teaches folks how, citizens, how to prepare for themselves, their family, and their neighbors. And it's a six-week course, one night a week, and then we have a final drill. And Dean is going to be hosting it at Cedar Woolley Fire in September, so he wanted us to come and talk about the program. These are our two instructors, Rick Wallace and Beth Choco. And Beth will be taking the lead. This is the first class she'll be taking the lead on as an instructor, but Rick will be there to support her. And I think Rick wanted to say something about the program as well.
How many of you are familiar with CERT? Okay, and I heard somebody over on the side say that she was trained someplace else. That's great. So when the Cascadia Subduction Zone rips, I don't know how many of you were able to see the presentation, Cascadia Rising, that was at the Lincoln Theater, was very impressive. There was also, there are also some good articles about that. But when that happens, it's going to be a lot different than what we have with some shallow earthquakes that are only going to affect a small area because that runs all the way, it's going to affect all the way from southeast Alaska, British Columbia, Washington, Oregon, all the way down to Crescent City, California. That's a massive area. When I retired as a firefighter paramedic, I said that I was, my goal was to make Fidalgo Island a disaster-resolute community. Fidalgo Island has gotten bigger, so that's why we're teaching in Cedar Woolley. Sorry, left hand goes up when it's a joke. So it's, what the CERT does is teaches people to be safe. We know that when something disastrous happens, people are going to be out there, they want to help their neighbors. And it was, this course was developed by the Los Angeles City Fire Department and it's because they have a close relationship with Mexico City. And they had spontaneous, untrained volunteers there that helped save 800 people, but 100 of those spontaneous volunteers died. So the big push is to help, to know what to do, to build a community and teamwork. And it's been a privilege to be able to be doing that for the last four years here locally. I was doing it for a long time down in the city of Everett, since 1999. So thank you. I'm glad we're going to be having a class over here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions? And the class is free to any citizen as well.
No, I just have to say though, that my husband and I did it at the Boffo Fire Department and it was excellent. And I'm happy to see it come here. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nancy Tiffany from Skagit Domestic Violence on the lethality assessment program.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here to speak about this. I'm very excited about this program coming to Skagit County. I am speaking about the Skagit lethality assessment program. You're going to be getting an outline shortly. And let me give you a brief history of what that looks like here in Skagit County before I explain what that is. And here in Skagit County, in spring of 2015, the domestic violence task force in Skagit County saw that this was a best practice instituted in a lot of other states and jurisdictions as a way to deal with domestic violence. And we discussed the pros and cons of it and decided that it would be appropriate for Skagit County and we decided to push forward. So in October of 2015, we met with the Law and Justice Committee and then in January 2016, the chiefs meeting. And from there, we went to two meetings with the county commissioners back in February and March of this year. At each of these meetings, we were encouraged to come to city council meetings and approach the leaders of the community and tell them about this program so that you would be informed about something exciting that's going on where domestic violence is concerned. So we're at that place and time and we're excited about this crossroads. The LAP or lethality assessment program, as you will see in your outline, was developed after 25 years of research done by Dr. Jacqueline Campbell at Johns Hopkins University. And she was studying domestic violence homicide, of all things. She came up with a 20-question danger assessment that is highly effective in determining someone's risk of danger in a domestic violence situation, but it was highly impractical to use in the field. It is something that advocates use, but because all of the answers are done in narrative form, it is completely impractical for law enforcement. So a group in Maryland got together in the early 2000s and refined that 20-question danger assessment down to 11 questions that were most predictive of domestic violence homicide. So it has been in use in the field since 2005 and is currently in 34 states and in 600 law enforcement jurisdictions. The research that Dr. Campbell did showed that law enforcement intervention by itself did little to curb domestic violence, particularly lethal violence. So it was determined through her research that if that law enforcement intervention was combined with domestic violence services, there was a much better outcome. So the lethality assessment screening tool is one page, 11 questions. Officers will have them in hand when they go to the scene of a domestic violence call. We rely heavily on the training and experience of law enforcement officers to determine if what they're seeing at that scene is at a high risk for lethality or not. So it is entirely up to the officer's discretion whether they use this. This is intended specifically for intimate partner violence, not for parent-child or neighbors or something like that. It's just for intimate partner violence. And there will be time involved in this, but we say that it will take, from the start of the question to the officer being back in the car, it should take no more than 15 The officer again will initiate the questions with the victim. And if that victim answers yes to certain questions, then that victim will have screened in. And if that victim screens in, the officer will then use his phone to call Skagit Domestic Violence and speak with an advocate. The victim is given the opportunity to speak to the advocate. If they choose not to, we will follow up with that person in 24 to 36 hours. And then again, the officer would be on his way after that's over with. We will work on a safety plan with that person on the phone if they choose to speak to an advocate and we will see if they're appropriate for shelter. So you may wonder what some of the questions are in the lethality assessment. Here are a few. Has he or she ever used a weapon against you or ever threatened to use a weapon against you? Has he or she ever threatened to kill you or your children? Have you ever, or have you recently left him or separated after being married or living in the same house? Has he or she ever tried to choke you? And is he or she unemployed? All of these questions with six more have been shown to relate directly to high lethality behavior. So the benefits of the LAP, it's so exciting to us to see that we can employ this in our county and actually reduce domestic violence. It has been proven to drastically decrease domestic violence homicide, to reduce near fatal injuries and reduce re-assault rates. And with those claims, we can say that only 4% of the domestic violence homicide victims have ever been put in touch with domestic violence services. And of those murder victims, 50% had already had law enforcement on the scene at some other time with those people. So if this screening will prevent re-assault rates, that means fewer callouts for officers. And if it prevents near lethal injury, that's also fewer callouts for officers. If a domestic violence victim enters shelter, it has been shown that the re-assault rate of that victim decreases by 60%. So why are we talking about this in Skagit County? We don't have a lot of domestic violence homicides, but for every domestic violence homicide, there are eight to nine people who are seriously injured. And we do have people who are injured to the point of near lethal, well, they're almost One person would be too much. And again, if that person is so severely injured, law enforcement would be called out, whether it be to the scene or to a hospital. That's still more time that it takes for the officer. So if the officer invests the 15 minutes on the front end to do the lethality assessment, they will reduce the time that they spend in the field going to further domestic violence calls. So why here in Skagit County? We want to keep our domestic violence homicide rates as low, if not lower than they already are. We want to protect our officers and keep them from going out on further domestic violence calls. So the next step for us is, oh, and I forgot to mention, this involves Cedar Woolley Police Department and Acortis Burlington Mount Vernon Police Departments and the Skagit County Sheriff's Office, excuse me, as well as Skagit Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services. So we have formed a collaborative, we're all stakeholders in this. It will be implemented countywide and the first train the trainer session will be September 13th and we're really excited about it. Every officer in this county will be trained and have this material with them. So by the middle of January, this will be enforced throughout Skagit County. So we wanted to let you know. Are there any questions anybody might have?
I was wondering, what did you say your position was with the...
I probably didn't. I'm Nancy Tiffany. I'm the Associate Director at Skagit Domestic Violence.
Thank you.
Yeah. Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. It sounds like a really wonderful program. All right, next on the agenda is public comment time. I'd like to remind everybody to limit your comment time to three minutes. And I'd like to also remind you that this is not a time to talk amongst yourselves, but to address the council.
Deborah Peterson. I'm here on behalf of the library itself tonight, 802 Ball Street. I would just like to say that we had an unfortunate medical emergency yesterday and I would like to have a call out to the very quick response from police and fire and for their very kindness in dealing with the situation. It made it a lot easier. It was a tough one and it's going to continue to be tough for us, so we thank them very much. And if anyone is so inclined, it's a very cute show tonight on King 5. I saw it just before I headed for this meeting. I think it'll be on Kong tonight because I think the Olympics are on Channel 5 itself. But a very nice shout out to our police department on King 5 tonight, so I hope everybody gets a chance to see it.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson and I live at 928 Beachley Road in Cedar Woolley. Apparently because of the stand I have taken against the mayor's library proposal, I have become the victim of lies and calumny by proponents of the mayor's proposal. I wish to state for the record that I always act in accordance with my highest sense of right, striving always to be honest, conscientious, and courteous in my behavior and statements. I understand that taking a stand for principle may cause me to become a target. I am not taking this stand for personal gain. Let me reemphasize, I am not taking this stand for personal gain. The principle I stand for is simple. The citizens of Cedar Woolley have supported their library for over 100 years and they deserve to be asked about its fate. They deserve to be asked if they want their library collection transferred elsewhere without their vote. They deserve to be asked if they want their city taxes to fund a county entity. It is the ethical thing to do, it is the right thing to do. Though I may be heaped with scorn, ridicule, and lies, I will not yield on this principle. Ask the citizens. Let them decide. It's their library. Thank you for listening.
My name is Nicole and this is my husband. We live in Ball Street. From our house to library, very short, it doesn't take five minutes. I really love my library because everybody would work like family. I moved from a big city, Phoenix in Arizona, people, they walk over there, almost like no person contacted or started up like, oh, I'm a employee, I come here to serve you and me, I'm customer. No person I've contacted and no friendly, no talking at all. And I think that my library worked really well. I don't understand why they can buy together because sometimes big is not always good. And the other thing, if we want to move, but we think that a big is good, where we got money to build a building and how much budget, how are we going to pay for it? And then I know that they say that, oh, don't worry, we won't raise taxes. Uh-uh. Seen them move to the United States 24 years ago, I saw that many times, they say one thing, but they are doing different things. That's it, I want to say.
My name's Ed Kugel. I live at 501 Fidalgo, Ward 4. I wanted to talk a little bit about community and our library. I want to say we should keep community police, I don't want to see sheriffs policing our community. We should encourage the police to be in our community. And we should encourage people to respect and enjoy our community. And that's what the library does. I moved here 20 years ago. I'd recently been divorced, I had a daughter. And I wasn't rich, I'm a blue collar worker, I'm drywall taper, so I would go to the library every weekend with my daughter. And we'd pick out some books and right away, I became to love our community. And it was because how welcoming they were and they knew my name, they took interest in my daughter. And I've seen over the 20 years, how our librarians have worked for our community. They haven't just, it's not just a job to them, they care about our community. They've worked for our community. And I'm against this merger. I don't see any benefit for our community. It's not going to save us any taxes, it's just going to be put over to the county. Our taxes are going to go up with this new library, not down. And I don't really see the need for a new library. Every time I've gone to the library, there's been plenty of room, plenty of workstations, and lots of books. What we don't need, we don't need a bigger library, we need to fund our library properly. And then we'd have plenty of books and I don't, you know, I don't see the need for our library being any bigger. And I also resent the way this merger has been managed. First, our librarians worked to get this tax district established. Then they said they didn't want to be part of our library. They wanted to have their own library and move somewhere else. Then they moved their library into our community. And finally, they started negotiating with our mayor to take our library away as a merger. This is no merger, this is a hostile takeover. They have no library, they have three stacks of books. And what do we get out of it? We get stuck with the bill for another big library and our taxes are going to go up again. And our library is not worthless, it's priceless. We shouldn't give it away, we should honor it, it's 100 years of history. And I just, I'm really upset the way this other district has stabbed our librarians in the back three times and now we're supposed to reward them with a hostile takeover. They're offering us a big bag of cash, so we buy into their library and it's a joke because we're going to still end up paying for it. Thank you.
A lot shorter than he is. So I'm Christine Johnson, 801 McLean, city resident. So a fairly large number of our city residents use the library and they should be asked what they want for their library. They should have been asked before the mayor talked to some district people and decided with them what he put in his proposal, but they still should be asked now. At the recent Monday public forum meeting, there was a picture up here of a whiteboard projected up on the screen that had ideas of what a library should be and have. That's the kind of ask of city residents who are library patrons that should happen. Not a joint needs assessment meeting held with district residents, but separately. What do the citizens of Cedar Woolley want for their library? So tonight, I'm asking all you council members, very politely, very respectfully, but also very forcefully, please make this happen. Please hold a meeting where city residents who actually use the library ask for their ideas and opinions. They can brainstorm, tell you specifically what they'd like a new or remodeled library to look like and offer and have. I think it's a reasonable request. I'll also be asking the Cedar Woolley Library Board to hold the same type of meeting, but that meeting should be held at the library because many people don't feel comfortable coming here to City Hall. Because they know if they disagree with the city, they will become a target. There'll be retaliation, there'll be attempts to discredit them and even to try to destroy their reputation. So sadly, but understandably, there are many people afraid to come here and voice their opinion. So there really needs to be two meetings for the city residents, one held here, hopefully that you could all attend, and the other one with the library board held at the library. Thank you for listening.
I'm Helga Anderson, 928 Beachley Road, Cedar Woolley. Last Friday, Friday night, I arrived back from my yearly business trip to my farm in Sweden, which is located a couple of hours south of the Arctic Circle. And what do I find? A smear campaign of lies and deceitful things towards my wife. And any person, and I will say, I'm not going to point exactly to which person who did it, but that person can speak up in this public forum also. And should be able to do that because I know this person actually have the city council and the mayor on her side. So, and I do also know that my wife is an exclusive speaker and I'm proud to be married to her, but this just needs to stop. And if the mayor, as he craves for, to have a legacy, to step on, to move up, I don't think it is the library that he should actually go for. That should be taken to a vote for the citizens, to the citizens of Cedar Woolley. If he wants to do something, he should go for something like fiber optics that we all need. In my travel up there, when I had to take care of business, where I was even north of the Arctic Circle, every little house, every little village, everybody had fiber optics. Why can't we have something like that? That would be a legacy that the mayor could be proud of and we could be proud of, that the mayor actually worked for it. Thank you very much.
My name's Dennis O'Neil, I reside at 109 Telkot Street and Brenda is my neighbor. That should give me points. You know, I wasn't going to say anything, I was coming to listen, I didn't have any thoughts on this really, but you know, a couple of things have really bothered me and one of them is the city council. You know, I don't, I remember the mayor coming out with that proposal on January 21st and talking about it in February... talking about it in February or March. And at the next meeting, he actually, that's when he actually got the city council to ratify that he could actually negotiate, even though he'd been negotiating for two months and probably longer back in the last year. And I really question how many people on the city council, especially the relatively new people, ever knew this was going on until the last minute, just like most of the people out in the voting district and the public in general. I just, I believe that the city council's been given a really good sales job by the mayor and maybe by Aaron. You know, Aaron works basically with the mayor all the time. No offense against you, Aaron. But, you know, it's, you know, you are elected separately, the mayor. You're not supposed to be hanging on his coattails. You're supposed to be standing up for us. And I don't see it. I know one or two have been doing it. I know Chuck had a lot of complaints about how the council and the mayor was running before. I heard it every weekend when I went to drop my leaves off. But, you know, you really do represent us, and we would like to have a little bit more respect from the city council. It seems like you walk in lockstep with whoever's in charge. And I have heard the same complaint that a couple of people brought up, that, you know, that if you cross the mayor or his, or his people, you know, the city council or whoever, that they can make it really tough. And they have. They've made commitments that haven't been honored. And it's usually because it's a one-on-one type of deal where there's no recording. And I wouldn't meet with the mayor alone, and not that I don't think he's trying to be honest, but I, I like it here because you got it recorded. There can't be any, any confusion when somebody gets up here and talks about what was agreed to and what wasn't. Unfortunately, they've managed to make sure that you can't ask questions back to us, and you can't agree with the people out here talking. You are just sitting there, and it must be real frustrating for you at times, and I know it is from what some of you have said, and have tried to say things and get hushed up. I don't agree with that philosophy. I understand it. It's sort of like negotiating with the library, which has been put out there, but you can't negotiate if we got to come running back, get the vote of the people and all that crud. Well, that's the bottom line. It takes a little longer, but it's, you get the people behind you. Look at the time that's been wasted so far, because if people don't know what's going on, and we come in here after talking to you about trying to find out what's going on, and we get it piecemeal. If I was the district library, I wouldn't negotiate either. I'd be very untrustworthy of folks that don't represent their own people. And you aren't doing it. You're just letting things, you know, it's sort of like a rubber stamp. You listen, and you vote, and it's along the line. And if I was back there, I'd be wondering, when they talk about this thing's been going on for three years, I don't want to know exactly what. Because it certainly didn't come out to the voters or the public. And that's why there wasn't any argument about it, and that's why it's gotten to this point where it's just suddenly getting rushed through. And you participated in it. Rick's been here for years, and he should be standing up for the people. I'll pick on him because he's the longest one up there. But this is, you know, and he's not going to be around next year, a couple of years from now. And I don't blame him. But, you know, again, it's, well, let me see here. You know, it's, it's just real frustrating for me to see it. And I don't know how many of you like being city councilman. A lot of people won't even run, because it's not a very well-paying job. It's a thankless job. But you hear the gripes like Chuck, I'm just picking on you, Chuck, because you're the only one that's vocal enough to stand up and say things. And of course, you're not, I guess you're not going to run again. But, you know, you all got up there for a reason. You didn't like the way things were going, the secrecy and all the rest of it. And you're rubber stamping it. You know, Jermaine, I picked on her one day over at Lauder Rodeo. I said, you know, I made some complaints, and she said, well, you, you know, and I was disappointed. Nobody called me later and said, well, what are those complaints? Because I think that's your job, too. I don't think it's right here for an hour or so every, every two weeks. And she disagreed with me. And I didn't like that too much. I didn't think that was appropriate. She didn't really disagree, but she didn't agree at all. So I don't know if you say that's not agreeing or whatever. But I would really like to see more people up there behind that counter actually get an active role. You don't report to the mayor. You report to the people out here. But you're going lockstep with whatever he thinks is good. He puts a good smile on, he's very articulate, and I personally like him. But I don't think it's being run the American way, and that is the people should have a vote, or at least if they say, well, it's too late to do that. You do have the process of advisory vote, which can be done anytime. You know, where you can actually call in and give your whatever information, and it could be notarized, you can give in a letter or whatever, what's your favor. And nobody back there has ever mentioned that. And I think it's really a disservice to the people you represent. I, we can't do much, I mean, Keith's going to go where he wants to go, and that's pretty obvious. But you folks have been here longer than families have than Keith or I have been. And it's sort of sad when you're sitting there, and basically you truly are. I know you disagree somewhat with that, but I haven't heard or read anything about your views especially. And it's just really, really frustrating to me, and I can't understand why we need a city council. We could just have a city manager and skip the whole process here and save a lot of money and time. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for a public comment?
Can I add something? I just wanted to say, we had a mayor here once who...
Come on up, come on up to the podium.
We had a mayor here once who wanted to put a dump next to our high school. A lot of people didn't think that was a good idea. It had to come to a lawsuit. Maybe we could have a vote on our library.
Okay, next on the agenda. We have unfinished business. City Council Critical Goals and Objectives. Aaron, do you want to elaborate on that?
For our new council members, this will be the first time that you've gone through this process, but we discussed it at the annual retreat, so it's not new. What we've got here on page 35 of the packet is the Vision, Mission, Critical Goals and Objectives. I note that they're not in order of priority, most recently updated in September of last year. So the question for you tonight and/or for the next council meeting, if you'd like another meeting to think about it, is what, if anything, you'd like to change? And we've had, we've had some good success with items that the councils put on the agenda. For example, we've recently had specific goals of completing the Jamison SR9 project. That was one for this year. The, I think the prior year, we, we had, the city council established a goal of improving public safety, and the city was able to hire two additional officers really tracking that goal. So the way we use this is we take your critical goals and objectives, and those are part of the budget call that goes out to staff next month. So when the budget gets developed at the very beginning, budget requests tie back to your goals. They go through that process, ultimately resulting in a balanced budget that's presented to you for further deliberation, consideration, and approval. So I had a couple of comments on here for 2017. Now that we've become more formal about the Swift Center, I thought we should make reference to it. The Cascade Trail Project going west should be complete in terms of the phase that was part of this objective. Likewise, for Fruitdale Road, we can note that we're moving into the construction phase. And then whatever it is that we may like to do in terms of updating both the library and Memorial Park projects, it depends on funding, so. And any other goals or objectives, I know. I've heard at least one specific goal to introduce air conditioning to the senior center. It's a little smaller goal than a lot of these, but certainly if that's, if that's what you want, we could put that in the infrastructure investment column, maybe even the quality of life column, whatever you think makes sense on that. So just looking for your direction and thought, we could have this tonight and also at the next meeting. That would give us time then to have it produced and ready for the, for the budget call.
Aaron, I'd like to add, it probably fit neither of the first three categories, but Mary spoke to it last time, and I've, for years, but signage is an issue in the city that, you know, we have small directional signs, but I think they're kind of ineffective. Heading west on Highway 9, you don't even know you're in Seadrwully. I mean, you come off of Highway 9, head west, you just don't know. From 9 to 20, I guess, there's no signs that say anything that's in Seadrwully. You know, Trestle sign, any sort of sign that points to downtown. So, you know, I see it as business and community. I see it as promoting economic development and infrastructure investments. I think there's a big need for signs that say Seadrwully, especially in the roundabouts as Mary spoke to, you know. We're just, there's, we have a couple, but I just don't think they're, you know, if you're driving on the main roads, you just don't know what Seadrwully is.
So improve signage, welcoming visitors, and directing visitors to shopping?
Well, anything. I mean, you know...
Downtown?
Yeah.
Coming down before the hill?
Well, I mean, yeah. I mean, the roundabouts especially, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity to say Seadrwully is here. I mean, if they're just passing through, they don't know Skagit County or Seadrwully. They're, they're not going to know. They're going to see the industrial complex and keep driving up River or something, you know. And people coming down Highway 9, heading either south or west on 20, off, you know, from Township where it intersects there, there's no signage besides a small, you know, welcome to Seadrwully, you know, kind of a, a little metal sign that says entering Seadrwully city limits. But again, that's not a face of Seadrwully. I think that's attractive to most people, so.
So do you like that language? Improve signage, welcoming visitors, and directing visitors to downtown?
Well, I guess maybe some...
Yeah, that's one hundred.
I mean, I think maybe it could be in each group, but I think there should be a major sign at the Trestle. So I think that should be a point. I think there should be, you know, you know, substantial signs at the roundabouts, and I think there should be smaller signs, especially where, you know, there's no visible signs. Like I'm saying, coming west and south on Highway 9 and 20, there's no signs that say Seadrwully. I guess, not at 20, because there's the one that's kind of with the really east end of town by the trailhead. But that's it. So...
Does the railroad allow signage on...
We own the right of way.
Well, so the Trestle project's one we've been working on for a number of years, and Burlington Northern had sort of given some preliminary approval to move forward. They've generated some standards for us. Janiki Industries and Peter Janiki in particular, and his wife Suzie have been working on a concept that they'd talked about potentially manufacturing and donating. It's about a 60-foot wide sign span. And the concept was to do something on both sides of the Trestle. So, you know, it would beautify the Trestle, which is not super pretty, but also be welcoming and kind of orient people to the historic district. So I'll have to ask them, you know, it's a volunteer job, and they were very upfront, that it definitely is on the list lower than the jobs, you know, for real customers. Understandable. But they have a concept that, I think the, the idea was to use their, their water jet to cut steel and create a multi-layered dimensional sign that kind of depicted Seadrwully and had the lettering for Seadrwully welcoming people. We will still have to get approval from the railroad, which I anticipate will be not that easy. I'll follow up on that. So it sounds like what you like is some general language about improving signage, but also some specific language about signage at the Trestle, at SR9 Jamison, at Cook Road, and Merle. And what else did you say?
Even small signs that just say downtown or services or something like that, that are a little bit bigger than the, I guess, the directional signs. So especially, I guess it's Moore Street heading west. There's, there's nothing from that, the bend at, I guess, 9 down to the corner and heading west out of town, you know, I guess through town, on, from here to Murdoch, Metcalf, there's nothing.
So something other than the Wayfinder signs?
Yeah. I mean, a Trestle sign at that point, I think, would be adequate, but until that happens, I think there needs to be some, some signs that say Seadrwully is, you know, to your left. Yeah.
Wouldn't that be kind of under expand tourism? That kind of all, like, that's kind of under expand tourism, maybe?
What's that?
It's all like, like, under expand tourism, a little more signage?
Yeah, well...
It could be under...
I mean, it's economic development. If you bring people in town, they stop and eat, or stop and shop, you know, that's economic development.
Yeah, and I don't, I've never seen signs for, actually, since we're on a topic of signs, I've never seen signs for the dog park. I mean, like, not on, on Highway 20, is there?
There are the Wayfinder signs.
They are?
There's a study of bark.
I've not even seen them.
And, I mean, I guess the challenge with the Wayfinder signs, of course, we spend a lot of money on those, is maybe there's too much information, not big enough. You know, because it seems like nobody sees those. I mean, I'm hearing tonight, there are no signs when, in fact, there are quite a few signs that are just apparently not effective.
There's a lot to read, and you have to be fairly close. And by the time you're that close, you know you passed.
And you're driving by, right?
Yeah, I like the roundabout.
The roundabout. Getting all anxious.
Okay, are there any other items that you want to, do you want air conditioning on the list, Chuck?
Well, the only thing is, I'd like to see more pressure put on the landlords downtown to, to kind of give the city a facelift. It kind of looks like a slum area when you go through some of these other, take Concrete, for instance. I went through there, and I couldn't believe how nice that little town looked. The storefronts are all nice, the awnings are all nice. But Seadrwully, you can walk down the street, and you can see daylight through most all the awnings. And the landlords, I don't, I think all they want is their rent. They don't care about the buildings. But Seadrwully needs a facelift, and I think it would, it would be good for the town. I suppose you could, you'd have to put pressure on the landlords, and I don't know how you go about that, but something needs to be done.
So maybe encourage revitalization of downtown buildings?
Yeah. Well, not just revitalization, but also just sprucing up, too. Because concrete, I mean, concrete buildings are still vacant and empty.
Do you prefer encourage sprucing up of downtown buildings?
I don't know how to describe it, but, I mean, they had a volunteer go through and paint. Even though their buildings are not revitalized or empty, they still look great from the street. I mean, so I, I mean, Chuck is right, you know. Revitalization is one thing. If you get people in there and start renting, that's awesome. But I, you know, I think if they're not cared for, the buildings, they're not going to see renters.
We already have that on the list, by the way.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, we do, under infrastructure investments. It's the second one.
Oh.
Encourage repair to the downtown buildings?
Mm-hmm. Skip that. Thanks, Julia.
So we can expand upon that a little bit. Are there any other items that anyone has right now?
I got, I got one other thing, Aaron. Is there any reason that another employee can't be hired to work in the parks? The parks, I was down at Riverfront over the weekend, it just looked terrible. But I think they need some attention. I think some of the pressure should be taken off of Nathan. He can only do so much, and they keep piling stuff on him. So some way or another, you're going to have to find some relief some way. Hopefully, hopefully they can come up with enough money to hire another employee.
Or improve staffing in the Parks Department?
Yes.
I don't disagree with you, and of course, the point of this is to get them on there. You know, that's a challenging one due to the economic cost and different from something like a signage concept where it's a one-time expenditure that's ongoing. But that seems like it would come under maybe service productivity and innovation, something like that. Because we certainly have added more parks, and we've decreased park staffing. And there's no question that we, we continue to pile more on the public works operations crew. You're quite right. Other items?
Just kind of a comment regarding the parks.
I know that when I lived down south, one thing that was common, I think it was twice a year they actually had with the public come in, and they helped with the trimming, some of the maintenance, picking up whatever excessive garbage. And I think it's great because it allows people to take ownership of what they're actually using and what they ought to take pride in. So, I don't know how we would work that. Just kind of a thought and idea, if it's something that could be implemented once a year, twice a year for the community to participate in helping spruce up the parks.
So, maybe develop community cleanup day in parks?
Maybe something like that.
Okay. Any others?
It did, actually, it did, yeah.
Clean up the town?
Yeah, we did see that, actually, at Memorial Park, yeah.
Well, that was the police department, and specifically the police guild with some, you know, spouses and a few other city employees who did that one. So, not quite as broad as you were thinking, but definitely got a lot done that day.
I know.
Other items? Anything that you want to take off of the list?
Just one more thing that maybe can be thought about. I guess it's maybe it's my pet peeve, although I've heard other women mention it, and that has to do with the roundabouts. If there was some way to beautify them or even displaying signs on the roundabouts, I think that's maybe what you were getting at, Brad? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's part of it.
But anyway, some way that we can beautify those roundabouts, because I think, because you have to go around several of them to get around Sejowoli. It'd be nice if there was something there that would help us identify with that.
What are you, are you thinking landscaping, or art, or objects? I mean, we've heard conversations that range from landscaping, which the reason we don't have that is the ongoing cost of maintenance. So, that's why when you go to Anacortes and you see their roundabout, we don't have one of those.
Right.
We've talked about, I've heard conversations about utilizing, you know, historic pieces from the museum, so you could, you could go to the roundabout with the old yarder, you could go to the roundabout with the even older yarder, or whatever.
Well, maybe.
Or art even, you know, some.
Maybe, again, that's something we can toss back to the public. Maybe it's something that's not important to them. If it's not, then why should we invest money in it? On the other hand, if it is important to them, what would they like to see there?
So, maybe just roundabout beautification of some sort, okay?
Right.
Got it. Anything that anybody would want to take off, or?
Well, I actually see, I don't know if this is a duplication or not, I'm just asking. So, there's something under business, community, and city partnership, the expand tourism, but then under promote economic development, market our city. So, is that different in any way, or am I, or is that similar? To me, it seems.
I think it's different, in that the tourism is one potential sector of economic development, whereas under promoting economic development, heading marketing our city could also be to prospective businesses. So, the concept there, and we actually went through the process a few years ago of developing some marketing materials and, you know, we've gone out and engaged in some of the outside activities to get the word out about what's going on in Sejowoli in terms of the business climate. So, we could be more clear, certainly, about those, but I think that one was tied into recruitment. I would say our magazine probably is helpful in that regard, too.
Yes, yeah.
I've received so many compliments on both issues now. I was at C-TAC just on Monday night, ran into somebody in the subway who complimented our magazine, a resident just outside the city. So, you know, pretty neat to hear that positive.
So, I put an ad in there, and my businesses, I mean, people come in and say they saw my ad in there. So, I'm sure it's helping other businesses, too, so.
That's good to hear. All right, well, then I'll take all these items, kind of work them in for next council meeting, so you'll have that for further refinement and consideration.
Okay, any more comment on this? We'll move on to new business, item number nine, the first reading of the animal code update.
So, we've got Officer Carr here tonight to walk us through that, and then she and I'll field any questions that you might have. So, she's walking to the podium. We're just shy of a year into the major overhaul, and, you know, we're fortunate after a number of years of not having somebody doing this work, having somebody really focused on it. So, Officer Carr identified a number of areas that we just missed, and this is an attempt to correct those.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm proposing a few changes. The most important of the additions to the code that I'm hoping to add involve how we are able to impound dogs, seize dogs, and prosecute people who commit acts of cruelty against dogs, cats, animals in general. Currently, most municipalities in Skagit County have adopted within their ordinances a provision to impound and prosecute persons who commit animal cruelty, too, which is a misdemeanor, within their municipal courts, within their ordinances. We have not done so. It makes it very cumbersome for us to, for me to have to go through the district court. I have to obtain a warrant from a district court judge to seize a dog that has been a victim of cruelty, or any animal, but I'll use dog as an example, it's the most common one. And the period of time that we have to hold the animal to afford the owner to obtain a petition for the release of the animal is very long through the district court process. And then if the, we choose to file charges, the prosecution is done by Skagit County Prosecutor, which makes it more difficult to have a person charged because of their workload, and it's a very cumbersome process for us. It also ends up costing the city more money in the time that we're holding animals if we follow the guidelines of RCW, which is currently what we're doing. The way to expedite the process so that we can put it through our municipal court is to adopt a provision to handle any non-felony animal cruelty charges within our own municipal That's the primary reason for this revision. I looked at the three municipalities closest to us, Anacortes, Burlington, and Mount Vernon, and they all basically have the identical language that I'm proposing to you all this evening. In order for us to handle animal cruelty misdemeanor processes in our municipal court, we have to define those. So, these are not acts of cruelty that I have pulled out of my hat. These are currently defined types of animal cruelty that is non-felony that are being handled through municipal courts in our area. A few other changes. If we are going to address animal cruelty and be in line with state law, we have to change our ordinance to not just address dogs, but to address animals in general. So, I'm proposing changing the chapter of being just dogs to animal control and protection. And most of the language in there is adjusted to reflect that. We also provide, had provided an impound procedure, and we are proposing updates to that to address the process of impounding a dog, how long we have to hold a dog if it has been subjected to cruelty or neglect, what the redemption process is for the owner, what the appeal process is through our municipal court, because we have not had any of these And then the last item that is up for consideration is dealing with those folks who walk their dogs on a leash, allow their dog to do his business on someone else's property, or on public right of way. Because most of us who live in town, we maintain the public right of way. We have a repeat offender, walks his dog every morning, walks their dog every night, they go in the same place, we're all having to deal with that. And we haven't had a scoop law. And there's, you know, question about how are you going to force it? Are we all going to be, you know, officers are going to be getting 911 calls? It's handled at the officer's discretion, there typically is not a huge volume, but having it as an ordinance, if we do have a chronic problem, we have a way to address it. Those are the primary changes. Any questions?
Lauren, just one quick question. Under misdemeanors and penalty?
Yes.
I just noticed that all the dogs haven't been lined out and replaced with animal. I don't know if that was just, if that was intentional, or is that a?
It is, because we're adopting the state law to provide for the prosecution of animal cruelty, not just dogs.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what, it's, so, but under the section, the six point oh eight point three one zero, it has dog in still and not lined.
Three one zero?
Yeah, it says, I guess it's under.
Unlawful for the owner of any dog that has bitten a person.
Okay, under the penalties?
Yeah, it says misdemeanors penalty. It still says dog, and it's not lined out with animal. I don't know if that was.
No, that probably should be animal. It's a cumbersome process when you're answering the phone and you have a radio going. Aaron did most of the cross-throughs to help me catch them.
Any other questions we can answer for you tonight on this?
Those need to all be animal.
If not, we're just looking for any guidance, if you've got any concerns, and it'll be on your agenda next time for action, possible action.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to department reports. Chief Tucker?
Just to let you know, I've been working with Nancy on the LEAP assessment program. We've been going through a lot of different processes, trying to figure out the best way to go with this. We're pretty dedicated to improving some of the responses to domestic violence in Skagit County. We don't have any huge problems, but we don't want to get to the point where we have them. So, I've been a big part of that whole process, and we're getting everybody on board to make this LAP a success. So, I got, I don't know that my guys know it, that they're going to be wholeheartedly working on this by the end of the year, so, we're going to be a hundred percent on board here, real quick. Most of what I got is just kind of giving people a heads up, we're getting much more active on social media and trying to get a handle on that. The Lucky Teriyaki issue really brought it to the forefront. Something that really wasn't a huge issue became a huge issue to manage, and it wasn't so much one for us as the sheriff's office, they had a big issue to manage. And we're sending Heather Sorsdal to a social media training class, talking about some of these issues, and trying to get a little more guidance and getting a handle on how we're dealing with social media aspects of any sort of incident that comes up. With that, some of you may have seen our post on the dining behind the badge event that was held. I happen to have escaped the state and gone back to visit family, but it looked like a really successful event, spearheaded by Dave North, who had the bullpen downtown, and they came up with over $9,000 for the Washington State Law Enforcement Memorial Fund, which was incredible. And that's kind of, I guess, indicative of the responses that we've been getting, support for the local law enforcement from all the citizens around. We get all sorts of support, and this is just a, I guess you can actually tally up how much support we're getting right now, it was over $9,000 for the support. Also on a Facebook, an International Association of Police Chiefs sponsored event, you'll see that there's a why I wear the badge, and it talks about some stories about why officers do what they do, why they're working in the job that they work in. Jason Harris was one of our first people in that series, and then we're going to go from senior officer to junior officer, so somebody like Katie, or Zach, or Austin will be a next one on our post. So, if you're following any of our stuff on social media, look for that, and hopefully you'll find some of that interesting and actually get a little insight as to why some of the people are doing what they do. We'll also continue on with our frequently asked questions. I come up with some Facebook posts that kind of give information on things that we hear all the time. You know, there's questions about gun laws and how to handle certain issues, and we're putting things up there. One of our next posts is going to be what to do if you find drugs or needles, any sort of drug paraphernalia, and that question comes up. Just a pointer right from the get-go, if you're going through the McDonald's drive-thru, don't hand the officer a bag of needles, that's really kind of gross. Trying to cover those kind of questions. Yes, and that's happened to me twice. And then there's been questions on gun ownership under House Bill 594, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, and we're going to post some information on that. And there's a King Five News report today, they came up and rode with Jason for a while on, we got given a bunch of Morgan's Espresso cards, little five-dollar gift cards. We really can't take that kind of stuff in, it's considered gratuitous, but what we did is we took it and used it to highlight people who have done something positive, that the officers note during the course of the day. People, the kids, you know, mom and kids riding bicycle to town with helmets on, I got them a five-dollar gift card. So, we're kind of trying to pay it forward with anything we've gotten. We got all sorts of offers, we got a bunch of car wash coupons that I need to talk to Aaron about that we got from the local car wash. You know, that's really kind of in the same vein, and we're looking at doing something similar to it after we've talked to the owner of the business. So, we've gotten a lot of good support from locals, and the press is doing, actually, the Herald's going to come ride with Jason tomorrow and see if they can catch him in the act of giving out another coffee card. But we're trying to get, I guess, we've already got a pretty good tie to the community, we're just trying to strengthen those ties to the community. Some of you may have seen Sergeant Pierce, he's back with us and working. He started the first of the month, and he's working night shift. I think he just came on shift here at eight o'clock tonight, and he's getting back into the swing of things with Sergeant McElwath on nights. And we're actually testing for some new officers tonight for reserve officer positions. We've got three people that are looking at wanting to be reserve officers with us, so Jason's doing some testing with them tonight to see if they kind of make the first cut, and then we'll follow up and see if we can get more of them on board. That's pretty much free help. They put themselves through Reserve Academy, and we dig around and find a uniform that fits them, and a minimal amount of outfitting and background check, and we got a ready-made officer to put out on the, on the street. The, so if you may have heard, we had a burglary at the cemetery not too long ago, and we got a tip that some of the stolen property was at a local residence. The person lived, their back fence bordered the cemetery, and they had to walk almost 100 yards or 50 yards through the cemetery to get to the shop out there and steal all the stuff. And we recovered a majority of the major items out of there in conjunction with the Department of Corrections. So, pretty good success there. I think Nathan was pretty happy to see some of that stuff coming back. And some that I have been working on. And something I have been working on, the organization on part of the Chiefs and Sheriff's Association for the state, put out grants, and we received two grants this year for radar units for the cars. And I know one of the things that we get complaints on a regular basis is speeders. People aren't really complaining too much about the needles found in the road, and the heroin problems, the speeders and blow and stop signs seems to be one of our biggest complaints. But getting these little $1,000 grants from WASPIC gives us another radar unit in each and every car, and we can do a little more traffic enforcement as it comes fit. So that's been pretty good, that's two of those $1,000 grants this year that buys me radar for each car, so. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Klinger?
Well, we got a chance to use the new engine. We finally got it into service, and we were torn out to a nice little structure fire, turned out to be one of the biggest illegal marijuana grow-ups that I've came across in a long time. But everything went well, nobody got real munchies or anything during the fire. It was an interesting fire. The sheriffs have been working up on it, the Drug Task Force, but we did get the truck in service. It did, I don't know if anybody went to the fairgrounds today, it was on display there for the day, it was our turn to take the shift over there, so we had crews over at Skagit County Fair today, working that. And last part of good news, and I'm sure Rick will probably say something too, I became a grandfather two weeks ago, almost two weeks ago tomorrow, and Rick will be, you became one again?
First time, Sunday.
Sunday, yeah, Sunday, so we're having new experiences, so.
Good experiences.
Dean, I want to say, we were at the fair today, and my boys love the tour of the truck, they got to go inside, and the firefighters there offered a tour back at home when we get home, so we'll have to stop by and get another tour again.
You can work Saturday, Friday.
Thank you. John?
Thanks.
Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on the projects that are underway. Jamison, they completed the work under Stage 2, which was on the west side of Highway 9 last Wednesday, and rerouted the traffic. And they're actually, they poured the last of the red concrete in the roundabout center island and the outside truck aprons today. They need to cure for several days, but they're hoping to shift traffic again next Wednesday, and start the last stage on the splitter islands that go down the center of the highway. We have one complication that's come up. The contractor got a little hurried in his first pours of the red concrete, and we've got some pretty significant cracks in a couple of panels. We're waiting for them to propose a fix for that. It may require taking them out, if it does, it's probably going to delay their operation by a week or two as they do that work to remove and repour those, and wait for the cure time on it. But right now, if they find a fix that's less onerous than that, they're hoping to do the final, or pave this Saturday, the east half of the roundabout area, the first two lifts of asphalt, and then in about two weeks, they'll come in and pave the rest, the final lift of asphalt after the splitter islands that come in and out of the roundabout on the north and south and on the highway. That'll take about a week. They'll do the final paving lift, and be essentially done, other than coming back after the cure period to put in the plastic striping and crosswalks and stuff. So they're hoping to be pretty well wrapped up by the first week of September, which is about a month early. In fact, it's almost two months early, which is a good thing, all the way around. The SR20 Cascade Trail Project that David's been working on is out to bid, and the bid's closing on the 22nd. You'll be seeing a memorandum in your council packet next week, which will be a recommendation to award with a bunch of blanks on it, because we are just about out of construction season. We have enough time just to get that project built if we get it awarded on the 24th. So we're going to come to that, come to the meeting prepared for that, and if we do get a good bid, we will recommend award on the 24th and go forward. We've had a complication on that one as well. This has been an ongoing problem for us, but the Department of Transportation, because of their loss of staff that they've experienced over the last few years, it's getting to be really difficult to get a response out of them on reviews, on things that are involving work on the highway. One of the things that's required of us is that our traffic control plans have to be reviewed by them. We ran into this problem on Jamison, caused us a great deal of issues, and additional expense for additional traffic control plans after we had put the project out to bid. We had plenty of time to avoid that on David's project. DOT just flat dropped the ball on us, and three months in reviewing our traffic control plans, we finally got the comments yesterday, and they want us to do the work at night. We don't have a budget for that, that adds about a third to the cost of the project, and so we have vigorously requested that they reconsider that. That is a possible complication that could cause us not to get the project out to bid or actually awarded this year. So working on that, the local DOT folks are cooperating, but that goes down to that great morass called Olympia, and sometimes those things disappear down there, so we'll see what happens with that. We do hope to bring that to you for award on the 24th, barring those issues that I just mentioned. The Friddell Project, expecting the 100% plans tomorrow, and everything's coming along well on that. I'm working on the TIB Urban Arterial Project Program application, that's due Friday the 19th, and I'll have that ready to go. The commissioners, I went to their meeting on Monday, and they approved the support letter that you approved tonight. I don't know if we've gotten it yet, but we should be getting that for the mayor's signature, if we haven't already received that. The commissioners were very supportive, and support at that for us.
They are, as well.
So we should have that letter ready for the final signatures on it, if we don't have it, shorten it. We think that's going to be a very strong application because of the partnership, because the design work is already funded and basically complete, and because of the economic development grant that the county awarded for that project, which is going to prevent, pretty much provide the MASH requirements for that project along with the design work. Very strong application, we believe, so we'll see what happens. We'll know November the 18th is when those will be announced. The other TIB application which you approved submission on tonight was our arterial pavement project on State Street. Any of you that drive that way with any frequency know that's getting in really bad shape, especially in the vicinity of the old railroad crossing. So we have an overlay project and a repair project from Rita to Fourth, for all the parts that are not, that were not fixed with the project a few years ago near Metcalf. And we also have in there sections on State from Highway 20 to Maple Street, we have a few bad sections there around Snellson's that we hope to get in there as a part of that. Now, TIB will award segments as they determine funding is available, so we may not get all of that, but we're applying for it to do that next year. So that's pretty much Republic Works right now.
Thank you. Aaron?
Nathan and I were in Olympia yesterday with Larry Otis to present our, make our final pitch to the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Memorial Park Revitalization Project. So we, we got some positive feedback from the evaluation team. We won't know for about a month where we rank, and then depending on where we rank, we won't know if we're actually funded until the legislative session's over. So the process is RCO ranks, they've got about 80 projects, and they'll rank those projects in order of priority, and then the legislature in developing their capital budget will fund a dollar amount that will then reach down to a certain level of project. So last cycle, they funded everything in the park program. This cycle, we don't anticipate that, that was an anomaly, the legislature was sending a bit of a message to the state government about not buying more land. So they wanted to develop existing land rather than acquire new land for state ownership. But it was positive, it went well. Working on the Swift Center, your next council meeting will have an interlocal agreement, the third revised update to our partnership between the city, county, and port, addressing sort of the next phase of working together, particularly beginning in August or September, in developing strategies around mental health and behavioral health. Along those lines, our consortium group with representatives from the city, the county, the port, and the state, were at Pioneer Industries today in Seattle. So we got a great tour, met with their CEO, visited their, two of their manufacturing operations in Seattle, and it turns out they actually do quite a bit of advanced aerospace manufacturing, not unlike what you would see at Janiki Industries. But performed by folks, I think about 300 employees, working multiple shifts, with, I guess about 60% of their workforce has prior convictions or substance abuse history. So their, their model is to really bring people from that world through an employment model, and supportive housing, to the other side, and really help people get there. And they've been doing this since, I think, 1960 something. Also learned an interesting tidbit about the Pioneer Center, or Pioneer Industries, which of course operates PCN here in Sejuulie, but they were originally founded by an attorney who was an alcoholic embezzler, and kind of conceived of this program, sort of building a halfway house model while he was in the penitentiary at Walla Walla. So pretty impressive to see where this has grown, from something negative to such a huge, huge social purpose enterprise that's making such a big difference. Working also with the, with the county, county staff in particular, to help review and further refine the recommendations to the delivery model advisory group on the EMS front. You may get more detail from Councilmember Dunley. I wasn't at the last full group meeting, but was at the prior subcommittee meeting, and working on that with staff this week. We're down to three models that we'll be considering in more detail. Are you going to go through those three models?
I'll tell you which ones are the worst.
Okay. And also working on the updated rules and procedures following our city council special committee meeting on that topic, about halfway through that project. So depending on everything else, maybe another week or two. Also reviewing emails right now to release another batch of email updates to our library website, so folks can see what emails are that have the word "library" in them. About it.
I'm pleased to report that in the last 30 days, 1,100 utility rate payers have chosen to pay their utility bills via the city's new online system, which is a great time saver for us. Unfortunately, only 153 of those folks have chosen paperless billing, so we're going to do a little promoting on paperless billing at the same time. But it's, you know, it's been very popular, it's working well. September 27th will be the beginning of our annual audit. As we have several new counselors, I'd like to take this opportunity to go over kind of how the audit process works. As a governmental unit of the state of Washington, we are required to use, use and pay the Washington State Auditor's Office for our annual audit. This year, we've budgeted $25,000, so it's not an inexpensive adventure. Every year, they audit our financial statements, and we're pretty used to what they expect, and have it, try to have everything ready for them to minimize their onsite time, which relates in a, lessening the city's cost. Besides the regular financials, some years we have a federal audit, which if we spend, not receive, but spend, more than $750,000 in a year in federal funds, we're then required to go through this next hoop, which we probably will this year, 2016, so next year we'll probably have one of those audits, which must be completed and all of the paperwork sent to the federal government before September, so the audit would be earlier in the year. It also takes about an extra week onsite, not including their offsite time, and costs about an extra $10,000. Besides a financial audit, we're required to have a compliance audit, which happens every two years, so they will be covering 2014 and 15 for compliance issues, which are basically, did we follow all of the grant rules? Did we follow all of the state laws? Did council abide by the Open Public Meeting Act, public disclosure, all of those sorts of things. And they will normally choose one or two departments to focus more deeply into things. Sometimes it's within the finance department, they'll look at utility billings, some, or payroll, does the city follow the collective bargaining agreements, you know, those sorts of things. Sometimes they'll look at different city departments, before they've looked at how fuel purchases work. You kind of get rough ideas from our neighbors as to what sort of things they're looking at, but you never know for sure, and they don't exactly know for sure until they've been here a while, because they review all the council minutes. They have someone in Bellingham who, they subscribe to all of the community newspapers, and they clip things out and stick them in a file, so when you get to that city, you, you know, they're scanned online, and you, you know, the auditors go through that to see if there's something that warrants an audit, or at least looking into more. Sometimes they just ask questions, and there's not enough there to dig into, sometimes there is. In, in our city, we look at things a little bit differently than other cities. Some folks hate the auditors, they stick them in the worst room in the building, and they're actually kind of mean to them. We put them in the nicest room in our building, and I kind of figure they're costing us money, so whatever they want, we drop what we're doing, and we get it to them. We try to have everything ready, well in advance before they get here, and anything we think they're going to need, we've got it, you know, nice color-coded, tied to the financials, and that sort of thing. And we also look at it as an opportunity to learn, and I frequently say, if you've seen something in other cities that's working really well, that would help us be more efficient or do things better, please let us know. So we, for the most part, have a good relationship with the local audit team, which is out of Bellingham. As counselors, you will be invited to come to an entrance conference where they talk about what they're going to do, and then you're invited to come to an exit conference where they give the results. If, if you attend or don't attend, you will be given reports via email to review. And so anytime you have any questions about how the audit process works, or how it's going along, just ask, and I'll let you know as much as I know.
We're also happy to respond to any requests that you have, you know, if there are areas of concern or special interest, the auditors will be happy to investigate in those areas. So that's something that you could convey at the entrance exam, or even separately through communication directly with the auditor's office. Patsy didn't mention, but she's somewhat famous in these auditor circles for her box. She has a box that she has on the table before they get there, that anticipates what they're looking for, and that they really do like coming here. We think sometimes maybe they extend out just a little bit, because they dread going to the next place. And they'll even tell stories, they'll go to cities where they don't, or special purpose districts where they're not even given a table, you know, so they got to bring a card table from the Bellingham Field Office, which is kind of odd. We tell them that, we pretend like we've picked them, and that, you know, they're just like, we're like any other Fortune 500, we're doing our audit, that's part of our best practices, and we've selected this team, and then we treat them that way. And it really has worked well over the years. So anyway, if you can't make, if you can only make one, it's the exit exam is the one where they actually go through the detail and provide whatever level of issues they may have, and there's almost always something that is provided orally that is not also reflected in a report. That's kind of the best tips, best management practices type item. Doesn't rise to the level of serious concern, but, but it's interesting feedback. Doesn't rise to the level of serious concern, but, but it's interesting feedback.
Thank you, Patsy. Judith?
Well, the emergency delivery system meeting that he was speaking of, we did settle on three, uh, particular models of over, of direction. This isn't the delivery, this is, this is the overseers. And surprisingly, a lot of the groups were really, uh, a lot of the people were really, um, afraid of losing what we presently have. So, that was one of the ones they insisted on keeping. And then the other two, uh, one was, uh, to my mind, had too many layers. I don't like that one, but, um...
It was the EMS district and county department.
Yes. And then the, and then the other one with the board.
Yeah, that one went away, I thought. I thought it, I thought the current status quo EMS district and county department were the three that were gonna be studied in more detail.
I don't think so.
All right. I'll find out.
You read the paper.
Thank you for coming to this meeting.
So, the EMS district is on the list though, and, uh, this is something that's fairly new. Um, the concept is that, that by county ordinance, so by act of the county commissioners with the concurrence of the city councils of all four cities and all four towns, a countywide EMS district could be created. So, a wholly new, independent legal entity that could then, uh, receive the EMS levy dollars and would be able to contract out and or provide countywide services. So, this is something that really hasn't been previously investigated in much detail. It's on the table. I think the EMS provider, provider community seems to be kind of excited about it because of its, its purpose. You know, it, it's a single-purpose entity. Some question about the governance structure, which is not prescriptive in state law, but is actually, uh, subject to negotiation and agreement by the parties coming together. So, essentially, the cities and the county would decide who would actually govern, um, similar to the way a library district might work in the county, other than state law prescribes who governs that. In this scenario, that would be by agreement. So, that's one of the models that's out there for further deliberation.
And another note from the meeting, they were just describing how excited Aaron was getting over looking on his phone for the different laws and the whiteboard. Yes. Um, the other, the other thing...
And I and I on the whiteboard, we, we were running out of ink.
Right. The other thing, I had a constituent call and burned my ear about the summer concert advertisement in the magazine. And her basic concern was, unless she knew the band, she had no idea what their genre was. And so she was suggesting that that could be an addition.
Most of the, on the posters and things, I didn't, in, in whether the names list the website for the band.
Yeah.
So, that she could find out what the genre was by going to the websites?
Yeah, and if you're in your eighties, you're gonna, right, yeah.
Call the chamber, they probably know.
There you go.
Well, all I was gonna mention was, um, the Toys for Tots, which we do have another meeting before that, but, um, I am pretty sure it usually sells out, so, uh, that's on August twenty-seventh. And the, the tickets are, I guess you get them from Eagle Haven. And they're like twenty-five to a hundred dollars, depending on what, how many people you want at your table, whatever. But that's, uh, the door's at four o'clock on August twenty-seventh, and that's the Saturday at Eagle Haven. They do it for, it's the Marines Toys for Tots event they do every year. Anyway, um, it's always a lot of fun. Rabbit Wild is gonna be opening for Leroy Bell, so, I don't know if you guys wanna miss that.
What genre are they?
Rabbit Wild? It's like, uh, oh, boy, how do you describe it? It's like, it's like folksy, it's like folksy, uh, it's fun. It's really a lot of fun. So, anyway, I hope to see you guys there. That's it.
Okay. Julia?
You probably just mentioned that the Chamber is hosting the Cantina over at the fair.
I'm working there tomorrow.
Are you working there tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to let you know that, um, you can pop in and say hello.
From two to six, no, two to closing every day of the fair.
I just wanted to thank Chief Tucker. He put on a barbecue for, uh, Crime Watch yesterday. I think everyone enjoyed it. I know my wife and I did, and he, he makes one heck of a hamburger. And, and thank you, chief, we enjoyed it.
Well, I guess Dean kinda spilled the beans, but yeah. Early Sunday morning, I got a phone call from my son that he and his wife Tracy blessed us with a grandson about a week early. So, it was kind of a nice wake-up call. So, we're glad to welcome him to our family, yeah. Great-looking kid.
Congratulations. Yeah.
I don't know, is, do we have a frequently asked questions, question and answer sheet outside today?
No, it's on our website.
Okay. I was wondering if, because I'm, I'm interested in seeing that at least present at all of our city council meetings for people who are coming for the first time, maybe to ask questions or, or, you know, still concerned over some things. And maybe updated with some of the question, or questions and answers that we received the other night. And I was hoping it also could possibly be in a more place of prominence on the city website, you know, under the library tab?
Yeah, we move it, right now, it's under the date tab. We'll, we'll duplicate it up above under the important links tab. And we can certainly have a few copies available at the back of the room at council meetings.
Thank you.
All entertaining, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.